Undercard indivisible liberty justice.
You're welcome. Eating? Hi.
The next thing on the agenda is approval of the minutes for December twenty eighth. And the only thing I found was a on there. Wrong. There. Should have been the possessive form instead of the. Yeah.
You know approximately what paragraph it was.
Oh.
Oh. Section at least that I can definitely.
Was the. Your. That's what I can pick. Secretary agents that under where. Consider at the tax acquiring disposition policy. Near the very end there, it says. They pay in full, it is theirs. Yes. This is the English teacher.
Yeah, exactly.
This is the. Skill.
So I make a motion, we approve the December twenty eighth, twenty twenty two minutes with that one correction.
Second.
So the motion by Chris, second by Martha who approves the minutes with the correction. All those in favor? If you next is. Uh. This is a part must be part.
You know. How are you?
Yeah, I'm the project.
Happy New Year. Uh, I'll start out by just. Clarification on our call volume. We actually found one called the. Missed when we're doing the storm calls in December, so it's actually two hundred. Broke the two century mark. Record record year for us. Uh, training for the month of January, we're going to be you and our mandatory BLS training. Love it. All gonna do it. And we'll also be doing chimney fires. I'm here. Uh, as you guys know, I recorded a few months ago, we have two firefighters going through their firefighter line to train. About a five month program. Go halfway through. They're having a good time. People are gonna be training them. Fire and ice. If we have ice. You're gonna plan to do that on a Sunday before school vacation week in February, so it'd be February nineteenth, three to seven.
Much ice, do you need?
Uh, firmly a foot. No, we don't have it currently. Have it this weekend either. There's still a lot of open, open water out there, so please be careful if you guys venture out. Um, certainly not recommended. Um. We had a few promotions, as you probably saw in my weekly memo, Chris Boyner, Andy Johnson got promoted to lieutenant. Which meant we lost two officers who resigned from the department. Um, sad to see them go, but just busy lives, other priorities. And we also have, uh, two firefighters that retired, Doug West. And Don Flanagan. I think Doug was thirty year veteran and Don Flanagan was twenty five, so. A lot of experience going away. Which brings us to a roster of about forty two people. It's the lowest we've had in probably a decade. Which is still higher than most departments, I'm proud of that, but. Like to be up around fifty, so you guys know any neighbors that want to be firefighters, send them our way. Uh, last thing I have is we have three of us, three officers that have been approved. I don't know that I need your blessing, but I'd like to have it. Uh, the fire cancer, uh, supposing I went to last year. It was an all paid expense trip. I was able to get, uh, this year it's the University of Miami, that's gonna, uh, fund. Three of us to go to Miami, Florida in February. I don't know if that's considered a gratuity, but it's through. The university and through a study program that we've partnered with the Rutgers University. Cancer study. Just have your blessing, uh, like the three officers going on that trip. Be myself, the captain of great color and. Okay with that. We'll spend two days out in Miami.
That's too bad.
No, no cost for that.
Yeah, no surprise, it's not in Buffalo.
Yeah.
Listen, guys.
Yeah.
I make a motion, we, uh, uh, support three officers going to, uh, this cancer research symposium.
Second. Oh, uh, so the motion by Ken, the second by Joe to have approved the. Uh, uh. Three officers, three fire department officers going to the, uh, fire cancer study. For the University of Miami. At the University of Miami, all those in favor? If you were going to, uh. Toronto, would you go?
I should go to New York or Michigan on Monday.
Did we get any feedback on the? Rutgers initiative from last year in terms of. Testing and that sort of stuff?
Yeah, yeah, each of our firefighters got their results back.
Okay.
Uh, individually.
Okay.
And they were supposed to share with us. And it might be in that. That printout. But the other six, the six hundred volunteer fire department. Firefighters nationwide that participate in that study. Um, and I think the, the chart shows where we fall in relation to others. Supposed to do this last fall, it didn't happen, but they're supposed to do a, a repeat of that same test. Uh, just to see if there was any difference here to here. Uh, I think that's still their goal.
Would you let? Would you let us know when? You hear something?
Yeah, I, would you like to know, I, I don't know that I can share the results of the individuals.
Yeah.
I can share the results.
Yeah.
But I, I can share kind of the, the average or, or.
Aggregate, yeah.
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 What were they looking for? B F A's.
B F A's.
Yeah.
You know, in our, in our blood, you know, in our systems. Um, from. Could be anything. Drinking water and what moment, it could be. Or no firefighter gear.
Yep.
Uh.
Breathing air at a fire scene.
Fire, fire scenes are huge. Because of smoke. But burns in homes can have B F A's.
It can also be in your, in your phones, right? Some of those phones that you use, isn't it the potential?
The old.
Feel.
A.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
You, you said John Flanagan, twenty five years.
Yep. Yeah.
I just.
And Doug West was third.
Is third. Thank you. You've. Maybe. Maybe it's. Um. By the. Once we're done after December, uh, just going a little real quick, got a. Here rest in the month of December. Uh, ones are operating without license, one for eating a hundred and seven fifty five. Yeah, one arrest for operating after conventional UI and bail violation. Uh. This one does, in the first pair of that, it doesn't. Not occur in December, but I put it on there anyway, that he responded to an argument. North Monmouth and shotless fires. Uh, that investigation was substantiated and. Presently still under investigation. Uh.
Can I ask about?
Yes.
Say arrest, you arrest someone, bring them to Canada, come. Uh, jam?
If they can't make bail, yes, now. When, when we. Where are complaints in the system, if they're issued a criminal citation, it is noted as an arrest. Okay, so these people may. Not have been physically arrested, I know the, the first one for operating without a license. That was not a physical arrest, but by computer standards that was issued a criminal summons, so it's called by them as an arrest.
And they're summons to court.
Yes.
Not arrested, not. Not bailed.
Correct.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just a roadside event that generated a criminal event that. It's coded as a criminal arrest. Uh. Still struggling to fill the open shifts over the weekend, our new guy i- is got. About forty nine hours of training time in that, um, doing well. We still, we still got a way to go before we. Had a recent road. Development that occurred in the past couple of days, the telephone system at the police department. Went down. We've done a lot of phones for our. Days now. Justin was able to make a couple of calls and got. Our IT people sat on there and they installed. Temporary system in there, um, just to get us back up and running. Got some funds in the other. Uh. At least we have, we can call out on them and we got a call into Calm Tel, Calm Tel Consolidated tomorrow and. Get them to forward our line, we've seen the new number they've generated for us. Uh. Don't know what cost of that it's gonna be, but. We need the phones and. Justin pulled it off, be able to get us up and running tonight, so. We are back in service as far as that's going to go. Uh. Sample, we handled three hundred and forty five calls for service. Which is. Up from the previous month. And we had three hundred and seventy bumping on Monday, right? All the stats are in the other type of calls that we handle, like I told you before, the, the, these forms here include. Rescue call from EMS as well as the fire calls. The fire's called a tight problematic because during the storms. But it's. Pump center just generates one fire call and then fire service goes back with the. Track of their own, so even though Joe. One down, three, they actually respond to two hundred that night.
It's.
It's not like outside. Uh. The last. We paid three pages here, Ken, I, I kind of did a, an analysis for you on, um, just for the month of December. Um. Traffic warning, birds and, uh, traffic citations. Um, and. Yeah, a hundred and nine traffic stalk and thirty one citations mentioned out of those hundred and nine traffic stalks, so. You know, you showed me for us in that request, I think our averages were.
Appreciate that, thank you, it sounds totally appropriate.
Uh. And I went back as far as when we started building the system, uh, from June first until the end of December, and we, we handled two thousand and seventy five complaints in those. Seven months. Awesome. And it, it breaks it down by hour and day, so you can see what the. But the problematic here is our time.
Driving to school and when school gets out.
Yeah.
Fine. For those people. Teacher probably.
Always. Trying to jam too much. Stuff into their day and the teachers are crazy.
But neither spelling. Spelling teachers.
Any questions?
Thank you, chief.
That's super.
Thank you.
You have an all expense paid trip coming to you?
No, but I need to be, uh, put on the board of the fighter ones. Thank you.
So this week, uh, my understanding is that Mark and the auditors were finishing up. That audit, they were going back and forth a lot this week on stuff that I hardly understand, they were doing accounting. Things going back and forth, but it looked like they were getting the answers they needed to finish that up. Um, I met with representatives.
This is, uh, for this for the year twenty twenty one?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, I met with representatives from DOT for the. For the bridge projects over, you know, the one way bridge.
Yeah.
Um. They just went over everybody's comments, th- they expect that bridge to be two lanes going forward with their project, they do not expect it to be lifted any higher than maybe an inch or two. Um. They basically look, it, it's a cost benefit, it would be very expensive for them to lift the bridge and they think that they have better things to spend money on, basically.
Uh, did they, uh, did they give you any clue as to maintaining access to both sides of the?
They didn't at this point, they kind of talked about trying not to do both projects at the same time, even though they think that, that the. At the diversion, the other one down by your house.
Oh, okay.
Um, the, um. Uh. They talked about their hope not to do them at the same time, even though they thought that, that the detours wouldn't really interfere with each other, but they were gonna try not to do them at the same time, they just generally don't like to do two projects in one community at once, because it's just too much destruction. Um. And they said they'll take. Those comments and there will be a follow up, uh, one of those types of meetings again, when they have some preliminary. Drawings of some. Kind.
Yeah.
Or at least a plan, and they thought that would be in the next few months, actually, they would have something for another, uh. Another round of comments.
And are they gonna do the arched bridge thing, or are they gonna do like the steel industrial look?
They didn't say. I don't think they know, because they're, they're not necessarily the people that are gonna design it, they're kind of like the project managers, so I'm not, I'm not sure. I spent a lot of time, uh, reviewing the budget, I know I sent this to you, but there's always, there's always more work to be done, so I spent a lot of my time doing that this, this week. And the front office, uh, was very busy trying to meet the Secretary of State's deadline to reconcile all of our voter lists from the last election, so that's very tedious to try to make sure that we can account for. Every voter, every ballot that we had, and that we can line those up. Or. Each one, there's usually like one or two that you kind of keep skipping over this name for whatever reason, and then. You have to go back through the two thousand names and. See which one you missed.
So there's a, there's like a after the fact reconciliation. To make sure that no extra ballots are missing or.
Correct.
No one voted twice or whatever.
Correct. That. They basically look at the ballots and when they can see that. If the discrepancy that you have on election day would have made no difference, they basically count that all up in the Secretary of State's office, and, and if they go. Well, a couple towns that night. Uh. They have. Four overvotes for the total, but the person won by fifty. They don't basically hold up the election for that, because they know that those won't make any difference. But after the fact, they want you to account for all of them, so they go back to each town and they say you need to show us where those. Ballots were, did you get them back, or did you misrepresent that you got one back, or, or that you would misrepresent that you got one back, that you actually, they never returned, it's just that type of exercise after the fact. And I think that's all I have, unless you have any questions.
Can we talk a little bit about the budget stuff?
It's a.
And we do that later.
It's an agenda item.
Yes.
Later.
So my question is, did you end up getting one of the two other people to do the months? Haven't that ended up going?
So. Megan, uh. Megan Norwood. Who was the planner in Auburn when I worked there, she's willing to do the scribing, um, and I'm trying to convince her right now to assist. The. Um. The comp. They were doing the complex, she's done that work for them, she's consulted on that stuff in the past, so I'm trying to convince her to do. That as well, we'll probably pay her a different rate for that, but if I could get her to help us, that would be great, because they're very. Those consultants are hard to get. They're busy.
Yeah. That's good.
So I'm kind of negotiating with her right now, seeing how much money I, I need to get her to help with that, but. That's the, that's the hope, but she is gonna do describing anyway, so we got that all set.
Have we made any progress at all on code enforcement, other than Dave's coming back?
We have one applicant that came in late last week, and I've been in. I've been in communication with both Wales and Winter about their needs as well, so I'm trying to assess. What everybody is, what everybody might be willing to. Hitch in and whether we can. You know, potentially whether a group of us can afford a full time person or something like that, so that we can stop the. Revolving door of these, because Wales doesn't have one right now either, or there's, is trying to leave one of the, I don't know if he's already left, but he's got, they don't, they have a problem too. Everybody does. Around us, as far as I can tell.
Yeah.
At the time.
Um, did, uh, the RFP for solar, did we put in a revised? Due date?
The due date is gonna get moved, I've been talking, um. To John from Revision, because I wanted to ask him in his opinion whether he thought it would be a better idea to. Pull it down or reissue or just back it up, and he thought if we just backed it up a month, we'd know in a month whether. Whether we're gonna have any progress with the rules or not, so that's what I will do tomorrow, and I'll contact the people that I'm aware of that are looking at it to, uh, at them.
There's a, uh. Delay on the EPA rules are expected on the fifteenth of this month, so making the. RFP deadline on the fifteenth, when the rules are coming out on the fifteenth, didn't make a lot of sense. And we did get some feedback from. Uh, Revision, one of the people that are likely to be. Interested in that RFP to say, hey, you might not want to make this a due date on the day of the rules, rules being issued, so. But we'll just push it back a little bit. And I understand you have a. Uh, meeting with the cabin masters coming soon.
Yes, tomorrow morning at ten. Uh, Reagan set that up, we're meeting with them, uh, tomorrow, they just finished taping, I guess, last week, I think. Is that what they told you to when they came in, they were in today pulling permits or something, right?
Yeah.
So I think they finished taping last week, so they are willing to meet with me and Reagan, uh, for now, and we'll kind of talk to them about what. Their desire is moving forward and when they're. I'll certainly, uh, pose the invitation, the invitation to come talk to you, but I'll see if they're comfortable with that, because they may not want to reveal their hand or whatever, I'll ask. Let's see.
Do you know what they're doing, Dave?
Yes, they're. They have two projects ongoing now in, in Monmouth. They have one on Boyd Drive and one down in Canada.
Oh, you mean the, the cabin business?
Cabin business.
Oh, but I mean at the, at Knowles.
Oh, at Knowles, right now they're, they're, uh, cleaning up, uh, the mess and figuring out which ones are watertight and not watertight. And what they can actually use in them, they, they've been working on the main building, cleaning it out and assessing where they're gonna start storing stuff.
A lot of cars there, uh, trucks.
They were, they're working there almost every day, they have a crew, actually that's not working. I believe working there.
Good. Any others?
Um, I had an inquiry, the, the new boat launch on Inavesta Cook, some ice fishermen attempted to go there and they said it's gated and locked. Does anybody know if that's gonna remain that way for the winter or?
So the upper parking is for snowmobilers. And there's a snowmobile trail that goes around the side there. So you can get access to the ice just by following the snowmobile all the way down. They wanted to leave the access to the top parking lot only. For the winter time, and the gate would be, the plan is for the gate to be reopened when.
Yeah, it's going down.
Yeah, yeah. So they, uh, just like, I think there's like. I don't know. Eight, ten slots for trucks with a, a trailer. That you could, you can park uptown.
Yeah. Um, and, and I got more, uh. Reports about the roads, again, the last storm, unfortunately. Um, I, I'm not sure what the solution is gonna be, but. You know, as far as people posting pictures on Facebook, oh, you can see, here's the pound line, as it goes from Bear Tire to. Um. Yeah, so I, and I don't know what the solution is to that.
Well, I, I, I have a suggestion of what might be going on, which is, uh, the pre-treating of roads. Which is happening in Wales and Lichfield. And not in Monmouth.
It's the salt priority.
It's the salt priority process and, and we were. Almost ready to go with salt priority, implementing salt priority for this season. But we backed off when we had some staffing issues, right?
And when the truck, when the.
And, and when the new truck didn't.
Exactly. And.
So I, I would take that as a lesson. That. For next winter, we ought to be. And, and maybe when we are putting together our budget for next year. That we ought to be including implementation of a salt priority process that. Is clearly a difference, I got a couple of phone calls as well. From, from people who are like, dude, what is going on? Yeah. Yeah.
Did we have discussion on what kind of numbers it's gonna take to get us switched over?
Uh.
Does it?
There's some, there is some equipment cost.
Yes, there is some equipment cost, it's mostly, uh, just regulators, so that you're not just throwing. You know, salt unregulated on the ground. Going salt priority tends to be a little cheaper than throwing sand, because you only need about a third more salt if you're doing it correctly, and then you can get rid of most of the sand. So you save on the sand costs. We still need sand in this town, because the dirt roads have to be, obviously we can't salt the dirt road, so the concern here is, is. Um. The biggest hurdle would be, do we have enough staff and enough equipment? To timely clear off the dirt roads, because they have to be a separate move, right, because you have to have a whole truck dedicated with just sand in it, and, and how do we get that scheduled? So that. It can all be done in a timely fashion.
But I, I think Lichfield must have. In White House, like dirt roads, do they?
Wales contracts it out, so I don't know what their.
Exactly.
Situation is, Lichfield has a crew about this, uh, it might be a little smaller than the one here. I don't know exactly.
Well, and, and certainly the advantage of salt priority is. You're pre-treating the roads before the snow starts to fall.
Right.
And that gives you a little bit. More flexibility in terms of getting your crew out.
Having, having them rest and then maybe go back out again.
Yeah. Yeah, so, you know, you don't have to start plowing as soon as the snow starts flying. You can. You can spend eight hours pre-treating the roads. You know, during a standard shift. And then have the crew take a break. And see what comes up. That's kind of the idea, is you spread out. You, you spread out the, the, the process of trying to get the roads cleared. And you save a little bit in terms of materials.
I have some literature if you want, because we had, uh, the guys from the local phone center come in here and they did a presentation. You may want to look at it too, Joe, if you want to. But we have some pamphlets and stuff that they gave us about, you know, how it works and. That kind of thing.
Did we, uh, and at, at the same, uh, part of that conversation, and this was probably a year ago, right about now.
Yeah.
Um.
Correct.
We were talking about the potential for, uh. Show, a salt shed. And we were sort of waiting on. Figuring out what we're gonna do with, with, uh, with the, the salt priority stuff before we made any sort of decisions, but. Was there ever any movement from DEP on the complaint about our salt?
I never heard anything from them after that.
Okay, so.
Uh, and then when they, they had that complaint about that. Catch basin in the road, and you're gonna come look at it, and I never heard anything, so I assume it went away.
Okay. Alright, so then that's not an urgent.
Because the discussion with the salt shed was that if we went salt priority, it doesn't need to be as big. Because if we have to have all the material for the sand and the salt, you need a bigger building, so the idea was to. Let's try it out, salt priority, and see if we like it, and if we do, then we can build a smaller. Salt, that was kind of the whole genesis of that discussion.
And, and, and that conversation was triggered by a complaint. To DEP about our salt storage.
Building.
Building or lack thereof.
Or whatever.
So. I hadn't been to the transfer station in a little while, but it looks like they've got. Sand for the public at the transfer station, am I correct? Or is it still down here? I, I thought, I saw something, maybe I was dreaming and it was some, a pile of something else.
I know they have a public access to see her.
Here, okay, well, I'm trying to remember, I didn't see the sign, I couldn't read it from where I was, but there was a sign over past the. Uh, you know, like where you put leaves, there was something over there, unless it maybe they had chopped the leaves or something and had that as compost, maybe. Okay, so maybe that's what was over there for. I couldn't read the sign, so that must have been what it was over there, so I thought, well. How will that work if they can only get through it three days a week, but no, it's compost, okay.
Anything else? I had a question, uh. I asked about the Spirit of America Award. And, uh. Did anybody have? And, uh, I got a reply from Chris.
What was Chris's idea?
Uh, Laurie Gifford.
Laurie Gifford, from, you know, the time she spent dedicated to the. Controlled Taylor baskets, you know, helping at graduation and cheering and. Uh, the Alumni Association. And I think that she's starting to wean herself off of some of those rules, so it's probably. She, she told me the other day that Roberta Wing, sorry, Roberta Kemp. It's another classmate, another. Eighty five, yes, is the president of the Alumni Association now, so, um. But I, I think. But I, I think that that's a good idea, because she's, you know, done so much in so many different roles, so.
Was this her last year for the control basket?
Yes, she stepped down from that, yeah, yeah. Yes, exactly, she's just not heading it up anymore and doing all of that. Yep, ins and outs, so.
Chief, you mentioned a, a woman that goes down to five bridges and picks up litter. Who was that person? That's a, a real civic.
Yeah, uh, her last name is Parker.
Parker, Cindy Parker.
Good class, amazing class.
Notably at this table.
A lot of famous and infamous people.
Unnamed or otherwise.
I would say, uh, we'll have plenty of opportunity. To thank Cindy Parker for her civic duty. But it seems like timeliness would be good for us to recognize Laurie Gifford.
Yes, yeah. Prompted by the headlines in the Kennebec Journal this morning, uh. On the problem of. Moors in the, in the, in the lake. Should we be getting ahead of that, is that gonna happen here?
Well, what they did is they passed an ordinance restricting them.
Right.
This, this board previously. In our last budget was approached by Wayne Reedfield and Winthrop to, to join that effort and hire basically a harbor master to enforce that stuff. And at that time, the board said they were not interested in, in that. So they have an ordinance that requires those boats to come out at the end, and there's a group of individuals who are very unhappy about it.
For, for the moors to come out of the lake, uh, but, but uh. They were concerned with congestion too, I, I.
Yes, and uh. I met with Jeff on Wednesday morning, I, I didn't know that he had done that tonight, that he had quit the night before. It was about the CEO thing, but he just kind of explained that, yes, there is kind of that issue now at the other end of the lake. So on the other end now Reedfield is concerned that if the mooring ordinance stands at Winthrop, that all those boats are gonna end up near there. Boat launch, because they have the same kind of situation where there's a, there's a landowner that doesn't care if people moor there. And then it's close to their public, it's close to the public boat launch, so it would be an easy, be an easy way for people to do the same thing up there end, but they're.
What is it exactly? That they are doing, is it they're mooring their boat and then like going into downtown Winthrop to?
No, they're just leaving them there all summer.
All summer, parking there all summer.
And in mind.
They don't have any waterfront to put their boats, instead of taking it in and out, they're just mooring it there for the season.
And there are ordinance restricted that to, you had to own lakefront.
Yes, basically, now. Now this, this is evolving because. Winthrop has not been told by IF&amp;W yet, because theirs is crafted slightly different than other towns, but. Out, out on some of the larger lakes, I know the other towns that have done this, IF&amp;W at first had been taking a very. Do what you want in your town waters, but now they're taking a different approach, because it's spreading. So now they're saying these bodies of water belong to the people of the state, not to you, and you can't restrict how people are using them.
You mean like to the town?
Yes.
They're saying that to the town.
Yes, they're sending them basically letters saying. You don't have the right to do this, now I don't know what would happen if, uh, it hasn't been to court or litigated or anything, but. Uh, Jeff has been told that other communities that have done similar things have been told by IF&amp;W that they cannot, but Winthrop has not yet.
Uh, how about on the coast, are coastal towns able to, I mean, that seems to me a, a much longer standing mooring conversation.
Inner title zone.
Do coastal towns get a chance to? Weigh in on what happens in the waters right off?
I don't know, but there are, um. There are state law court cases about that, where they went back and they read. Basically, the gifts from King George and all that to figure out who won what.
Inner title is different than inland.
Right, I think so, but. I think some of the coastal communities do have, because I have a friend that has a mooring.
Yeah.
He has a dock in Portland, and then he has a mooring, I don't know what coast it's on, but it's fairly close to Portland, and he said it cost him like twenty-five hundred dollars a year. To have that.
Get a permit from the town.
Yeah, uh, yeah, like that one should be, we had a mooring yard, and they had to be put there. And we only had so many, so it was, if you had one the year before, you got. First come up to a certain date, and if you didn't pay us the money, it got released to the public and. Lost it.
And there was a line, I'm sure.
Most were very careful about getting a hold of us timely, because they didn't want to lose it.
Yeah.
Kind of ruins your sailing season if you can, leave it in there.
And Conshewagin is entirely in town of Monmouth, so, so. What, what if a problem develops there, it's a small lake, it's.
I would be very concerned. Personally, I grew up water skiing and hanging out on, on a lot of solar counties and. You don't have, back then, we still now, um. I wouldn't like to see, I have no real issue with that, and have nots. You know, versus, that's not a good thing, I like to see people as much as possible entitled to put a mooring, I think you may not have limited. It's not, put it, you know, a hundred and, because you could have a safety rate, but. I think we're going on a slippery slope if we start saying that you can't, I'm liking what I'm hearing about IF&amp;W, how they're all looking right now, that's, I think, how we should follow.
I mean, obviously, it opened with Kean worms and we've run, because the only place it was being enforced was on. That part of Ranica wasn't being addressed or talked about on. Winthrop's part of Cobsey, Winthrop's part of Inabesakuk, Winthrop's part of Wilson. But it was for Winthrop, but only people that had been given notice, the, and the sign posted was at Enmark, you know, so. It, it was bad luck, but, so, you know, that's the whole thing about what happened in Winthrop, I think it just. Snowballed, so, yeah.
Well, I'm in favor of solving a problem that we have, not one that we might get.
Exactly.
But, I mean, if we, if we do start to see. I mean, I, I think we all need to be aware that if we do start to see this. Starting to gain some momentum and snowball. Within the town of Monmouth, that we need to.
So if you're aware of any moorings. In the lake where people just leave their boat there that don't live on the lake or.
Somebody mentioned something about Cobsey, didn't they, somebody? Leaving a boat at Cobsey, didn't we talk about that last year?
Someone had their boat tied to the dock.
The dock, yeah.
So they couldn't leave it there, and so they moved it to another place on the lake to put it on another dock.
So, you know, I think that's the only thing, that they were like leaving it tied right to the dock.
He was acting, living on an island. On the lake and then coming in when it go ashore, he'd tie it up and then he'd go back out to the island. He had, he, he didn't own any property. Um, but he was habitating on one of the islands.
Oh, okay. Not everybody can own an island.
Careful, we'll vote you off the island.
You have that opportunity this year, so.
Sure, any more? All this.
I, Winthrop's having awful trouble, having trouble now up, up on Turkey Lane with the dark, the egg farm, it was a public hearing there. We had a, uh. Cobsey watershed meeting here last night, and uh, Bill Mago was telling about, uh. He, he went to that public hearing, and it was like. Went, went on until almost midnight, uh, people arguing and shouting and yelling at each other, you.
I've, I've heard a little bit about this, and what was Bill's take, and just for a little bit of background, someone is proposing a rock quarry. For a section. Uh, off of Hoyt Brook, up on Turkey Lane in Winthrop.
Right.
And the concern is. Air quality issues with like dust being created and runoff, like where's the runoff gonna go? And unfortunately, a good portion of it would go into Hoyt Brook, which would then flow in Inabesakuk and then Cobsey. And so people are, are concerned about that and. Uh, trying to figure out. And, and apparently, it's up to the municipality. To regulate quarries, like that's not a DEP thing, that's a Winthrop thing.
Yeah.
Um, so. It's quite controversial. We, uh, ha- has the watershed looking at that, has he, he, uh, said anything about that?
No. I don't know, he, uh, I don't know how close it is to Hoyt Brook and how it will affect it, you know, in the runoff will go into the broken software. But, but, uh, I thought, the lithium mine over in. Mining is different from quarrying, right?
Yes, well, yeah, in legal definitions.
Right.
Yeah, because the legislature said so, but the, the, it's, they all obey the laws of physics. Right, and when you peel back that much. Earth, if it's an open pit. Mine, then you're gonna change the environment. And, uh. Yeah, I mean, I was there when we were looking at revising the mining statutes in twenty sixteen and seventeen. And there's all sorts of. You know, lots of evidence that. Aquifers get contaminated by sulfates that come out, that leach out of the bedrock that weren't leaching before, because they were covered. With soil, right, soil and trees. And so. When you create an open pit like that. Whether it's a mine or a quarry. Doesn't really matter. Um, then you are definitely gonna change. What's going downstream. If you want to know like a disaster scenario, there's a place called. What's it called, Lindbury, something? Blue, near Mount, Mount Blue, I don't know, there's a, there's a, there's a mine, abandoned mine that's. Begging sulfate runoffs and contaminating wells. In Maine, yeah.
Not out west.
No, this is. I think it's Down East Maine. That was sort of their evidence for like, hey, this needs to be regulated.
Anything else? Public comment? Okay, on to, uh, consider appointment of the ad hoc solar ordinance review committee.
Put a memo in there with the names that I'm aware of, if you have any more. Do you have any you want to appoint? If any.
They, they were in the, the packet. So for the record, Ms. Green. As I still call her, from the, from the planning board, Bonnie Green, Ray Simon, who's here tonight, Steve O'Donnell from the Plan O'Donnell. The planning board, uh, Joel Boulados dot. From the Conservation Committee, Andy Smith from the Conservation Committee, and Winona Prince from Conservation. Were we going to have a select board member?
Nominate Doug.
He goes to the meetings anyway.
Well, they, they need an odd person.
Yes, it's, it's an even. Which definition of the word odd, as in narcolot?
No, yes, of course.
I know.
I know.
He had too much to do, so somebody.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Justin, do you need a nominee, do you need a, a?
Yes, you have to appoint them, so.
Before we go anywhere. Ray had, had on me. Had something to say.
I think this. Review committee is a way to, to proceed as opposed to the moratorium that was requested. The key is that we make it move very long and. Don't get lost, you know, into the summer. But I think that's, this committee.
Ray, it would be my hope that you move it right along, and put it on the ballot for June, and anybody who's. Considering doing something with a solar development would know. As soon as the committee makes its own, you know, recommendations, they're gonna kind of know. Uh, what the rules of the game, the new rules of the game will be. And then, and then it won't be a surprise if people can adjust.
Hopefully, it won't be too many people, matter of tweaking what's on the books now.
I would just put in your charge that you need them to report back at the meeting on March twenty second, so that you can get it on the warrant on the fifth.
Okay, so I make a motion that we nominate, uh, these, uh, six individuals and, uh. Uh, Chairman Ludwig, uh, to the committee with a, uh. Uh, deadline of reporting back by March twenty second.
Okay, that has been a motion, and, uh, Marcus seconded it to appoint, uh. Okay, Bonnie, uh, Green, Ray Simon. Uh, Steve O'Donnell, Joel Boulados dot, Andy Smith, and Winona Prince to the, uh. Uh, ad hoc solar ordinance review committee, all those in favor.
Oh, and, uh, and Chairman Ludwig.
You, I think you had a question, okay, all right.
Did you want to be up? And, and not a chairman one, or me?
Report back by no, by.
All in favor. Uh, next is to review.
Um, and for those of us that can't attend, everybody's going in town, because we're already two or three nights. Yeah, they have those, well. It'd be nice to hear, I, I know there's opposing sides, all I've heard is the pro side, does anyone ever get in front of these meetings? And says, I have reasons why I'm not supportive of the panels, like. Why haven't we not asked for Jim Lebrack, who's supposed to be a really well-known person that's. Not for solar panels, but seems to be a knowledgeable state of mind, all I've heard is kind of like a steamrolling, this is a good idea, this is a good idea, but. I'm hearing from other folks that it's not always a good idea, it'd be nice to hear all facets or sides, but I've only heard one side that. Officially, so. Just wondering how that works.
Is Mr. Lebrack a, a resident of the town?
No, he's a, I'm not sure where he resides in the state of Maine, but he's like a well-known, uh, spokes, outspoken, uh. Solar or wind. Didn't you have a couple of meetings ago, some people here that were in opposition with it?
So this isn't, it, this is to change our ordinance? And exactly, so that's what, to re, to tweak the ordinance as opposed to. Where the town is standing or what we're doing with, you know, having town. Owned or leased solar or whatever, so. There, you know, two sides of the spectrum, but I think when we. Do the RFP, get the RFP on a proposal, we're investigating to. Think about, you know, having a town own solar, I think that that will be an opportunity to. Exactly, to have people come out and express their, yeah, concerns or, and if. Somebody, you know, like that wants to come speak or. The folks that are against it or not enthused about it.
I think it's a point of all aspects.
Exactly, yeah.
Yeah, I would suggest, because anything that the town's gonna.
Yeah, I would suggest because anything that the town's gonna do to purchase something has to go onto the warrant.
Yes.
So in order for them to sign the warrant, they have to hold a public hearing. So that's when the public has the opportunity to make comments on any aspect of the. Of the municipal budget, and that would be a good time to be here and say, you know, I'm against that particular item, you know, I don't want that, or I don't want. This other thing, and that would be a good opportunity.
Or you're for.
Right, or you're for, you know, whatever it might be, but that is a public hearing, that's the point, it it is so you can voice your concerns on the budget.
Right, in response to his concerns, I think the makeup of people that you appointed tonight. As both sides. But and some in the middle. So I think people that you have appointed. Will tweak this accordingly.
And my sense is that some are. Uh, not only both sides and some in the middle, but some who've changed their minds.
Good.
So it's it's kind of refreshing to see people with. You know, an open mind to things.
And and last night at the obviously watershed meeting, uh it was brought up. Uh, how that was affecting uh. The the jock stream uh or the farmland down there and uh. And the way that the what what's gonna putting those panels there, how it's going to affect uh the water. Going in, going down the jock stream.
On the chat. You mean on the chat stream?
Coming off the chat read on the self-mometer, going down the hill there towards. Dream.
Are they having erosion problems on on that hill?
I don't think I I don't know that it. Seems like quite a distance. It would seem to me that they just being that far away that. Any water that would uh because there'll be fixed panels. And uh. I would think would, you know, go into the ground uh and Bill Monaco said that uh. Well, there's a problem with putting animals underneath the the panels. I think. Uh. They mentioned that, somebody mentioned it, uh maybe Bill.
Yeah, there's a bit of a.
Because it's too hot?
No, it's it's a it's a. Uh. Confusion in the law. So uh if it were just an agricultural field used for uh grazing sheep. That would be exempt from any sort of consideration on worrying about runoff or uh sheep poop. But as soon as you put panels on it. Um, then it falls into a different category of regulation. And all of a sudden now, the what the sheep do. Huh, no pun intended, uh is counted differently. With regard to runoff. So sheep grazing under solar panels. Is a problem, but sheep grazing on a field is not. Under the law.
But he he said that it's not considered like an impervious surface, that the the panels. Are not considered pervious, so like. Anyway. It's. Okay. Uh.
Yes. Yes, you're aware that they're using sheep in other states for management. In the solar projects.
Exactly, and in Maine, we we've got a problem with it, maybe. D E P would prefer us to run monores.
Yeah, but they only allow you to move twice a year, something like that.
Dumb. It's dumb. It's nonsensical.
So this item from Winter Utilities, is this just informational in here? Because it's not an agenda item.
Basically, just if if you individuals want to make comments, you can. That's basically what it. I'm just trying to make sure that you're aware.
All right, I just did pay this an agenda item, so I wanted to make sure.
There's no action for you and the board to take it. I wanted you each to know about it.
All right. Okay, don't.
Do we need to say anything about that?
Not really. It's posted in your packet online for anybody who wants to look at it, Ken.
Onto uh. Review the first draft of the municipal budget.
Yeah. So. Um. Just don't know, as I said, my memo list doesn't include capital. We don't have that together yet. And obviously, we're estimating a lot of um monies on the revenue side of the state money. We don't, we don't know what those what those monies will be. Yeah, so I I tried to indicate those. Overall, the drivers of the of the costs in this budget, like I said, it's the it's the it's the union contract. Wage increases that were agreed to last year in their three-year contract. It's it's heating fuel, electricity, which everybody is aware of. And then it's it's general supplies that are needed for, say, public works, like color prices are like four times what they were. Previous. So that is mostly what is driving this. I I've estimated a number. For the school department based on my understanding is they did a five, they're getting, they have a five percent wage increase in their. Union contract, so I just applied that and we get schools. Generally, the personnel line that drives everything in a school bar. So I I used I used five percent there. And the county, I just kind of left what it was last year. So some of these, we don't. We don't have a full picture of what we're looking at, but I think it gives you some idea. So this front. This front page is your summary page. It this is this is very high level, but this is this is the whole. Thing here, so the those top top lines are what needs to be funded. Or what or what the initial draft shows to be funded. The second chunk of numbers are all of the are all of the revenues, non-tax. Um, and and your property tax levy is down at the is you'll see the property tax levy line. That's the amount that needs to be raised through property tax at this point, based on. Revenues and expenses that we're seeing. The valuation in that line, you'll see I increased it to four eighty-one. This is this is based on the assumption. After talking um to the assessor that she's going to be recommending to you that we we factor up values in the town by fifteen percent. So what that what that effect does is it raises the value of all property in the town and then the corresponding mill rate will drop. Then because the budget is increasing over last year. The the mill rate then increases some extent. So that. That number at the bottom is the is the expected mill rate um based on the information that's in this budget right now.
You point that out to me.
It's the very bottom line under fiscal year twenty-four budget. It's the. Second to last column on the right.
So. Uh eighteen ninety-eight, is that?
Yeah.
This is the mill rate. For uh preliminary mill rate.
Yes, very much so.
That is a two-point-seven percent decrease. From our current mill rate. This is our current valuation. I'll just read it aloud.
It's a million, but it's a hundred, yeah.
So our current uh let me start from the beginning. So uh in the preliminary budget. Our current valuation would. Increase by fifteen point five percent, a reflection of the. Real estate market essentially. Um. Our mill rate would decrease by two-point-seven percent. And the net difference between the two is the number above, which is the property tax levy. The property tax levy would increase. Eight-point-two percent dollar for dollar. That's correct. So. Values would go up, our level of taxing them would go down. And the overall budget would increase in the neighborhood of eight percent.
The mill rate would go down. Taxes would be increased under this under this scenario because because you had a. That the the value is going at fifteen percent and the mill rate's only dropping that or two point.
Can you tell me um? What the assumptions are built into this preliminary budget with regard to revenue sharing from the state?
I kept the same as last year, I believe. Yes, so I kept it at the seven hundred twenty-five thousand dollars.
And that revenue sharing. I mean, from the state, was that at five percent or was it some number?
Moving up. Yes, I think it's already it's there. It's it's fully funded. Revenue sharing is fully funded.
Is now fully funded.
It's the homestead exemption that they're increasing by three percent a year until theoretically it gets to a hundred. But there should be a little more revenue in it. Well, there will be more revenue in the homestead line because if we factor up everything.
All right, and did you include that in your? All right, so there might be an upside of of a three percent increase on the homestead reimbursement.
Plus, our ratio will go from ninety. To the share back to a hu- we think we'll be closer to a hundred if if we factor up fifteen percent opposed to falling to eighty-five. So the homestead value will increase closer back to the full value of twenty-five thousand, which then triggers more reimbursement from the state as well.
Okay, and and we're paying a small penalty. Because our ratios.
Lower. They're losing a portion of the homestead exemption because we're not.
Gotcha.
Yeah, okay, so each individual, I I can't remember off the top of my head. I think we're at ninety-two, but we're. Probably everybody's getting like twenty-three thousand or twenty-two thousand something this year opposed to the twenty-five. Because our ratio is not at a hundred.
So when we say that the um. The valuation will go up fifteen point five percent. Minerally. But that doesn't necessarily mean people's property taxes uh. That the valuation that is taxed would go up fifteen point five percent because some of that will be. Not penalized.
Right, and people's scenarios are different, whether they have a homestead, I have veterans, all the other things that potentially can have on their property. It would mean that if it was a if it was a if it was a non-homestead, they would be looking at a fifteen percent property increase.
Yeah, valuation increase.
Right, yeah, sorry, not property tax, but yeah.
Valuation increase.
And I'm happy to go through whatever section you want. I don't know if you how much detail you want to get into. Um, tonight, my basically, I just wanted to give you an overall picture so that as we move. Into the specific budget areas that you kind of have a framework at what you're at now, so you know whether you want to make. Um, changes up or down uh to get to a number that you're comfortable with.
The uh. I don't know, preliminarily was projected at like forty-five to sixty thousand dollars a year that we the towns would be gaining. From the solar farm on Ridge Road. Is that in our current budget?
It was it, I I would. I don't know whether whether the whether the whole whether the whole value was in there. Can you tell me, do you know whether it was operational? Last fully operational last April first?
Yes, it was. Oh, no.
Yeah, it started in like January, but I don't remember which January.
Well, I know that a year ago in October, they were still building it because I asked them to not make noise on the Saturday that Kim Brown is getting married. So and I think that that was. They had it done by last fall, that they the end the end of last year, so I think that it was. I thought it was online this spring from what I understood, so.
So a- as of April one this year, was probably the first tax year.
That it was fully in there would be my assumption.
Right.
Yeah.
If it was operating, it should be.
Okay, so then if it was operating as of April one of this year.
It's all it's already in the tax base.
It's already in the tax base. And already part of this projection.
Yes.
And how about um you said there was also some ARPA funding? Residual ARPA funding.
There is. Because the the water project didn't didn't cost what you originally kind of allotted that hundred thousand and it only cost about twenty.
Okay.
And we haven't spent all of the. We haven't spent all of the money that was in the categories that was approved at the last town meeting either. We just haven't spent it all, so.
Okay.
Depending on if you wanted to change priorities, we could. Potentially some money there to do. Whatever you want.
And and that could be applied to this fiscal year, could be we could hold it and apply it to next fiscal year.
Yes, by by the way, yeah.
So we've got some flexibility.
The next one should be the last one because I think it has to be expended. By the end of. Twenty-four, end of twenty-four, the end of twenty, something like that. I I have to check on that date too, but.
Okay.
We're coming up on the timeframe that it has to be.
That's something in the order of. Eighty thousand dollars.
Probably somewhere in there.
Somewhere in there, okay.
I just have a question. People have asked me and I I just want to get it clear in my brain so I can answer the question. For those of us in the town who have their taxes frozen. Does the state repay to the town exactly the the amount that we would have paid? If with this increase?
Well, that's the plan. The legislature is now in session.
Governor's budget today. In her in her proposal, they fully funded it.
Okay.
In her in her proposal, I I I wouldn't.
So if they.
In all reality, that's not gonna last forever.
So if they don't fully fund it this year. It's then our taxes are expected to go up.
Yours won't because they'll freeze. It'll get shifted on to everybody.
So that means you won't get. The what I normally tax would have been. You're gonna get cheated out of it. The town is gonna get cheated out of it. If it's not fully funded.
The rest of us are gonna pay the bill.
The the retail price, the retail price on taxes would be more.
We're coming out.
Yeah, so Dave, this is the same thing that's going on with the homestead exemption. Like, we're slowly working through reversing. The non-reimbursement that the state was doing with the homestead exemption where they're. You know, only reimbursing the town. Years ago, it was fifty percent, but now it's more. And eventually it'll get to a hundred percent.
And we've done that with the school.
Yes, exactly.
Fund a certain percentage which they're not doing and.
That one's that one's a little more complex.
I guess so, okay.
But my only question on here so far um that I looked at and wanted to ask you um about. In-house maintenance position. Were you thinking of, so you're thinking about not using the the um. Company that's been doing it in the past few years and how would we would look for somebody to have a single person that would do? The as an employee of the town to.
One of the ideas because we think that uh. Between the. Cleaner is getting expensive and they're having the same problems that everybody else is, so we're having days where no one's showing up because they call out or or whatever. Um. And then the cleaning is getting to be about forty thousand dollars and if we hired a, you know, a full-time person in in this town of thirty-two hours, if we did that, we could probably hire somebody for probably almost that exact amount or maybe less. And then we would have somebody that would um. Help Donna, for example, shovel the the front walk at the P D when she gets there in morning so she doesn't have to do it.
If they don't show up, we can go over to their house and find out why.
And it would be helpful to have someone around that can kind of do small maintenance activities like change light bulbs and all, because right now it just kind of gets done. Public Works has to do a lot of that stuff.
Yeah.
It's not really. What they're hired to do, but we're having them do a lot of that stuff. It would just be nice to have someone that could help out at Compton occasionally or come up here and. Paint.
The girls at the town office are watching a particular bug that is behind the door. It's been there for like three weeks now and then once.
Seeing if the cleaner's ever gonna.
Yeah, how long is it gonna go?
I didn't know that.
They keep leaving it there.
It's supposed to. But we it's supposed to and we've called several times and they'll come for. You know, a couple of times and they don't, and I don't, I don't know what the issue is. So that was just one option. But that was the intent.
This um. The like third page.
Yep.
No, I didn't. There's a what?
That's all the stuff.
It on page three, right?
Yeah. All the future government government on which you just used last year's numbers.
Yeah, those are just estimates because those are state monies and I don't know what they're gonna be. Those will probably change. Yeah.
So we'll have a discussion of whales and what whales is paying for the transfer station.
Correct.
And um.
Where is that?
What their assessment.
That's on that.
It's right below that.
Yeah.
The the state revenues, it's the next yellow mark, yeah.
So a hundred twenty thousand.
Yes.
It's right now, it's fifty-four.
That's what we've been.
Year to date.
Year to date.
So paid year to date.
The budget this year is one eighteen.
All right, all right, yes, yes. And and this. Uh, that you sent us. Uh.
Those numbers are more up to date than the ones on this 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 budget package, just so you know. I just got this. I just sent this to Mark this afternoon, so mine looks a little bit different than yours. That's why I keep saying, what's your stack number that you say over there? I just sent this to Mark this afternoon, so mine looks a little bit different than yours. That's why I keep saying, what's your stack number that you stay over there? So this one has better numbers. So when you meet with the department heads, we'll have the numbers right up through December thirty-one, so you can line up what the fifty year, fifty percent. Fifty percent mark is, so you're gonna make better guesses, guesses.
We, we're uh, it seems like we're doing uh. Very well financially, um, like. Considering how much we budgeted. Uh, and then, oh no, how much we spent compared to what we budgeted. Seems like we're doing exceptional, exceptionally well.
In certain areas, I think I would agree with you, and then in other areas, not so much, not so much.
Yeah, if you, I mean, it, because this is all QuickBooks, it's so easy to understand. I mean, the reports that we used to see were just sometimes not very understandable. And I'll tell you what, the QuickBooks stuff, because I use it all day long, it's just so much easier to understand it. That running percentage over here on the right-hand side, oh yeah, these are. So easy to understand and make sense and seeing this running percentage over here is really helpful.
Yeah.
Because you can look at that and say, oh yeah, we're halfway through the year. We should be somewhere around fifty. And the ones when you start seeing it, you know, seventy-five or eighty, you're going.
What's that? And, and just keep in mind that the only number that matters is the category that was on the warrant. So like, general government, you can go to that one. You see, it's got, has the town op uh. It, it has the town office, it has municipal buildings, enforcement assessing, elected officials and the boards and committees. The only number that matters is the one at the very bottom. You can add all of those up. So I can overspend and codes or. Or in assessing, it's just as long as that number at the bottom is less than what the voters approved. But the rest of it is just kind of internal, so you can keep track of where you've spent.
Yeah.
Oh, it's.
Now like fires, it's all warrant article, so he has to stay just on his.
Within his number.
Same with police. Some of the departments are on their own, but this is kind of a catch-all. Otherwise you're.
I mean, it's interesting. I, I, I spent a lot of time going through the, the. December thirty-one report, right? The halfway mark.
Yes.
For the fiscal year. And it's interesting, I mean, we, it, nothing earth-shattering, but. It tells a story that we've been hearing for quite some time. For example, the transfer station.
Yeah.
We've got increased costs and disposal.
Oh, yeah.
Tire removal, wood removal. Tipping fees, all of those are more than fifty percent expended, but that's not as. It's not a mistake, it's just a sign of the times. Uh, I also thought it was interesting in general and I see that it's sort of repeated in the past. I was kind of curious about um. Uh, how much we're paying in terms of uh. Finance costs, debt service, and um. So uh, the town is paying, each year the town is paying uh about five hundred ninety thousand dollars in debt service. Which sounds like a big number, but the reality of that number is. Interest expense portion is a hundred thousand dollars, hundred and two. The rest of it is principal repayment. Which, which means we're paying down debt at a rate of about four hundred ninety thousand dollars a year. As most of our debt is scheduled over ten years. Which says we're getting pretty, pretty decent interest rates.
For now.
I mean, we're paying three.
The ones we have now definitely are, they're, they're prob- they're mostly, they're mostly under four percent. Um, talking and describing moving forward, we're closer to seven now.
Yeah, yeah. It's about. Every four to six weeks, I get a letter from Camden National Bank letting me know that my line of credit, if I. And to you, want to use it, this is now. This is now removing the interest rate if you use your line of credit. So, and I think the last one I got, it was eight point five or something.
One, one line that might, that might kind of stick out to you is that, is that community services line, that's where we do the donations. But the way that we're, that we're gonna change the way we budget the cemetery, it makes it look like there's a big spike in that.
Yes.
But there's a corresponding revenue on the other side.
Yes.
So if you see that, just recognize, it's not, it's not actually a big increase in that.
We're not over.
It's on the revenue side.
We're not overpaying the cemetery, it's just the.
Oh, okay.
Um, and I'm assuming some of these, there's on page one, there's some line items.
Side by side.
Don't even go there. On page one, yeah, uh, there were a couple of. Categories that had no corresponding budget number to them. I'm just assuming they have yet to be allocated properly. So for example, business services has got thirty-two thousand dollars of expenses. This is on page one of the budget to actual comparison.
Oh, okay, I'm looking at my budget sheet. I don't, I don't have that in front of me.
So anyway, there's a thirty-two thousand dollar expenditure for business services. I'm assuming that that is just a internal.
That is Mark.
Yeah.
So we didn't have a budget for that, so the money for that is coming from eliminating the deputy treasurer position in the town.
Yeah.
That's, I'm not worried about.
Yeah.
Right, we did that in history, so we didn't budget.
Exactly, but we had a budget for the salary.
Yes.
So it just.
Mention the ARPA funds, the eighty thousand, does that exclude like what was re-approved like for the fire truck?
Yes, for like your fire truck thing, yes.
We're still, if vendors get parts.
Okay.
Yep. I'm gonna get you a price though, lock it in and just, you know, but it's gonna be probably like another couple of months before you did that work done.
Okay. Jeff, that's fine. I know the eighty should be outside of that stuff. The Compton Hall condenses are in there too and that's like. That's already.
Hi.
Just you guys in two weeks.
Did you, can I get a copy of the note?
It's chicken scratch if you can read it.
It helps all.
Yeah, sure.
Night, night, yeah. Are, are we anticipating borrowing?
Um, I, well, at this point, I don't have the capital, other than what's on the capital plan, but I have not um. I have not requested um a capital from the department heads yet. I don't think that Paul's asking for any. I'm not sure about Dan, I'm not sure about the Dans at this point. And I know Dennis has a few things that he'd like to do at Compton Hall. So depending on. Which, if any of those items you're gonna find, they may be more.
So this is.
That's the five-year plan with the stuff in it that I am aware of at this point, so. I have made estimates for the, talk the log and dam repair. And the Wilson Pond Bridge replacement based on the estimates we've gotten from the engineer. Um, and in this, I should say I have included our portion in the budget, not on the, in the budget under the. Uh, under capital expenditures in addition uh to the revale reserve. I've also added in the thirty-three thousand, which is our portion of the Woodbury Pond dam replacement. They didn't end up borrowing that. They ended up taking that out of their fund balance. So if we wanted to borrow for it, we could, it'd be up to that, but for them, they're gonna want, they didn't do a bond on it like they thought, so there isn't really a. A, a set repayment schedule for us. We need to come up with that money somehow. Either, either put it in the budget or.
Put our shares.
Thirty-two thou- thirty-two thousand dollars, yeah.
Just for one year.
Yes, that's it, that's our piece of that project. Everything else on that list is stuff we already have, or except for those items that I mentioned.
Department heads come to their budgets, we talk about it, will we have any this?
This, we'll have a capital uh list for you. Um, that's a question for you, do you want it? Um, capital in this budget is put all the way in the back under town. Why it doesn't get listed on, underneath department, so I can either. Neither have the department heads write memos to you with the items that they want, how much they cost, or I can add them to this five-year plan, however you would like to. Visually see them, I can, I can provide it to you in the way you want. If you want a memo to start with, and then, and then if you say put it in, then I can add it to the five-year plan if you want, if that makes it less confusing.
Okay.
Because it might be a lot of items that you're ultimately not gonna find and you're gonna see this huge number at the bottom. So it might be better if we just put it in a memo at first and then you guys can kind of talk.
Be different. I did have some questions about um. Just to make sure that I understand, I'm not concerned about them, I'm just making sure I understand. The overages are about, so the vehicle uh on, on our current budget. This is the expenditures budget to actual through December twenty twenty-two, page four. Vehicle repairs and maintenance, we budgeted seventy-five thousand, we're at a hundred forty-one thousand. Refresh my memory, what was that?
It's um just ongoing. If you look at the warrants, almost every week there's something in there that's quite expensive.
Okay, like the last one I remember was the transmission that blew that cost twenty grand or twenty-five or something.
Right, there's been some plow equipment, like the old plow truck, the loader has maintenance issues because it's old.
And then under uh on our current, this is on um, page seven of the same report. Uh, page seven would be capital improvements. And there's a line item, infrastructure, is that Cressy Road? Hundred seventy-two thousand?
So what Mark does is, is he doesn't break down um. He doesn't break down capital expenditures by specific code. He puts them in the categories in which. In those categories, so there's ones that are like building improvements.
Yeah.
Equipment and land improvements, so land improvements, infrastructure would probably be roads.
Okay, so land, if I see a hundred seventy-two thousand, that's the Cressy Road project. Which is not a surprise, I didn't see it.
He codes them differently than I've seen it done before, but.
That's fine.
Trust that he knows.
No, that's fine.
He can break those categories down. If you ever want to see what's in those, he can break those down in about two seconds. He doesn't, he doesn't list them on.
And, and I'm assuming there's no budget item. For that category because we approved a, a withdrawal from the undesignated fund balance.
That's correct.
For that item.
Okay.
So it looks like it's four hundred and sixty percent over budget, but not really. It's because.
Right.
We said, no, that's coming from the undesignated fund.
Over budget because we're making the expenses out of the general fund budget and there's no money there for it. So it creates a negative and then we make a transfer at the end of the year from the undesigned fund balance to make that whole.
Just want to make sure.
If there's. You are the next one, right? Public safety, I think, is, is at your next meeting, so it'd be police, fire, ambulance, dispatch, center. All that.
Let's go line by line.
Yep, absolutely. And anytime, like I mentioned, anytime, if you think Mark will be helpful to be here, he plans on being here. I told him he didn't have to be here tonight because we weren't really gonna. Dig into too much. If you want him to come towards the end, that's fine, but he is willing to come to any and all of the, all, any and all the budget meetings. Either, either in person or by Zoom. Um, when we get close to the end, it'd probably be. It might even be more helpful to have him on Zoom because he can, he can actively play with these spreadsheets. While we're sitting here and you can see how the mill rate's gonna change at the bottom. So you'll have a lot more detail about exactly what you're gonna get in, in the end if he's, if he's here. Playing with this while we're.
He can click on that number and it would. You know, if you wanted to see infrastructure, you'd click on that number and then it breaks out and it tells you.
Right.
It tells you exactly that, what, what is in there.
Uh, when the budget gets finalized, does it go to the town meeting to be approved?
Yes, it gets put on the warrant.
Gets put on the warrant.
Yep, so there'll be, there'll be kind of a, there'll be a public hearing. Meeting is the way I kind of scheduled this up, so then you can have, if anybody in the public in here wants to try to convince you to change what you have thus far. And then we'll have a final budget meeting after that where you will either make those changes or not, and then you sign the warrant and that warrant is what goes to the taxpayers to decide. Yes or no on, on each item.
When you do your quarterly. For, for us, could we do one of these? Or is this too much?
I'm not sure what you're asking.
But like uh, we asked you to come in, I think every quarter for.
Right.
With a, how things is all.
Yep.
Uh, and this to me is much easier to understand than what you gave us, which was only a couple of pages maybe, but. Uh, it's like I could, I can.
Yeah, that is the quarterly report that Mark made for you as of the December thirty-one. That's the, that's, so you'll be getting those every quarter. Now and you can go, yeah, just like that.
Yes, great. That's very good, very easy, much easier for me to understand.
Good, I'm glad.
Yeah.
You know when the auditors are gonna be done with fiscal year twenty twenty-one so they can tell them.
Saw, this was his last week, he scheduled with us, he was gonna be on site, him and Mark talked and, and Zach didn't think he had to be on site this week, so they'd been. Going back and forth, I assume that he's gonna be done this week. He told Mark that he would be able to give him the trial balance by the end of this month for the. Four twenty-one and that, that would allow Mark to do twenty-two. To start the process on twenty-two, he's gotta write the financial statements for that.
Okay, so.
And as long as we have enough time scheduled from RKO, as long, as long as they have enough. Weeks open for us, then we should be able to get that one done too, which is a matter of their schedule showing up at this point.
Is there, is it realistic to think that we would have the next fiscal year's audit completed in time for us to? Finalize this budget?
I honestly don't know the answer to that, but I can find out. I can ask Zach what, what his opinion is.
That would be my hope, because that will give us the most accurate financial information.
Yeah, I'd like to have it too.
Understanding what the undesigned fund balance is and where we're at and, because. We don't have that information and we're still operating on financial information that's a year behind and there's a lot of noise that happens in between and.
I'd love to put both years audits in the, in the next town report. That would be, that would be ideal.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll see what we can ask Zach about.
Can we go on to the, uh, part fourteen?
Do you want my computer?
If, if you don't mind, is that me?
Yeah, hold on, let me.
We just got it at like.
Yeah.
At forty, so I was already up here.
Yeah. Want me to read it or do my, I'll pass it to you when you can. All right, there's the top.
Blue Rock Earthworks, transport for the transfer station, two thousand six hundred and seventy-eight, NSK Burke. Fuel for vehicles, eight thousand nine hundred and seventy-one. Eco main tipping fees, one thousand seven hundred and two dollars. Avian Oil, this is our new heating fuel vendor, one thousand eight hundred and seventy-six. Buildings oil and propane, this is the last bill from when they were our heating oil vendor, one thousand one hundred and fifty-two. We truck refrigeration services, two thousand eighteen Western Star vehicle repaired, one thousand eight hundred and sixty-one. Mainways to energy tipping fees, one thousand eight hundred and twelve. Am municipal health trust, eighteen thousand seven hundred and forty-seven, health insurance. On this museum, Apple Fest reimbursement expenses, one thousand seven hundred and twenty-six, that's from the tip. Dan Roy reimbursement for a tactical track conference, one thousand one hundred and fifty-five dollars. Six, six of the firefighters. RSU two, four hundred eighty-six thousand. RSU two, four hundred eighty-six thousand and sixty dollars. State of Maine Motor Vehicles, seven thousand one hundred and sixty-nine, State of Maine IF and W, five thousand two hundred and forty-eight.
Make a motion, we, uh, approve warrant number fourteen for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three.
Motion by Chris, second by Ken. Warrant number twenty was seventeen?
Fourteen.
Fourteen. This will be your twenty-four, all those in favor. Move, we adjourned, I got all those in favor.